Good.
Okay, we'll call the Tuesday, May 26, 2015 Selectments Meeting to Order. I'm from the Fledge of Agents. Fledge of Agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of agenda. We have some changes?
I'd like just to add a couple things under my report on Doug about the wrecked apartment bus and the personnel policy amendment.
So D is a wrecked apartment bus and E would be personnel.
Well, policy amendment. That goes on Jack's to-do list. So we gave it to Simone. I know.
And you want to get rid of new business?
Yeah, we might, yeah, we might want to do that. I was going to wait till we get to it, but we can certainly do it. Well, let's wait because we'll have a little discussion about it.
Okay, all right.
Good.
It's all I have, and thank you.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Motion in the second. All those in favor? Okay, public forum. This is where the public can speak on any non-gender items. You got anything for us, Jack?
I will.
Okay.
I'd like to thank you all for your outstanding support of the school district. Very much appreciate it, very much. Thank you.
And it was nice to listen.
Yep, yep. Okay, approval of the minutes for the May 11, 2015 Selectments Meeting.
The only thing I had on there was to add Jack's name as being present. Other than that, I didn't see anything.
Were your motion to approve the amendment some over? Second? Second. All those in favor? Committee and board reports. The planning board meets May 28 here at 7:00 p.m. We have a special selectments meeting June 1 at 6:30 p.m. in the town hall. Anybody else got anything else from any committees or any boards? Okay. Managers report. Jack, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. And that's exactly how I'd like to start. It's probably time to say thank you. Not sure who's responsible for the letter and the town report. I had a hard time adjusting to that, but it was very nice. And I was embarrassed, but I do appreciate the kind remarks. I have an idea what am I to come through on.
How would I think like that?
But it was nice. And I certainly, I certainly didn't do it for any recognition, but I appreciate it. I think the thing that's been important for me is to use this time to say thanks to the staff. I'm not easy to work with or for. And the ladies, Wendy and Simone and Ann, have been just outstanding as far as very, very kind and very, very helpful. Fortunately, I'm old school. I'm just having, quote, in a straight of quote, secretary help and pretty useless on my own. But they adjusted to me and I'm eternally grateful because it's Simone, I did this, and Wendy, I did that, or Ann, can you do this for me? And they've always been right there whenever I needed them. Lisa has been out for a while, but you know, certainly was a good experience of learning together. I mean, Lisa's still in that learning stage. And we were all nervous and can be from time to time when neither, you know, neither person has a strong command, but we both recognized that that's where we were. And we're afraid to ask questions and get help and anxious for her to return. The upstairs crew are just a piece of work, that's all I could say. They're, they're, they're just, they're, Dan and Jim and Beth. I've enjoyed working with them. They taught me a lot. I think they're very, very bright and very good at what they do. They're, they're a management nightmare from time to time, but only on the positive side, you know, because they're full of ideas and thoughts and we shared a lot together. And again, I learned a lot from them. Rogers' assault, literally of the whole town as far as the public works. We, for some reason, decided to get along and have really enjoyed each other's company. And we've talked through and we've had some projects together that we worked together, both in personnel and it's been, it's been a real pleasure working with them. Work Catholics are outstanding. All in all, I had a great time. I really did. There were a few surprises. You know, we had some curveballs during the time that I was here. I think we're all aware of that. And it became a little bit more challenging than every day operation. But we've all managed to keep smiling and keep moving forward. And, you know, there are times that, you know, it's easier to get the poor me's a little bit, but that crew picked themselves up and, you know, and dusted themselves off and we've gone forward. I'm going to miss it. I loved it. I loved every day. You know, I, I hope, I hope you never need to see me again, but I can tell you if you ever need anything that I can help you with, I'd do it in a minute. Okay, you guys, as a board, you've been excellent to work with. I couldn't ask you, you look at out of my book, it's one of the best groups that I've worked with. And overall, it's been a very, very positive experience.
Well, as was stated in a couple of spots in the town report, you know, you came in at the most inopportune time. And I think you did an absolutely commendable job. Really appreciate that, the work that you've done. And I know that, besides, I don't speak for myself, I, you know, I speak for the board. A big thank you and we really, really appreciate the work that you've done. Definitely been a pleasure to work with and I can kudos to you and thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I feel the same way. And there's going to be a lot of mistakes made. Don't get, no, I mean, no question about that. Things weren't perfect. I mean, sometimes things got away from me, but you know, but all in all, it's been a great experience. I wish you the best. I'm not going to go away. I mean, I'm right here in town and will always have an active interest in. It was more than I bargained for. No question about that, but that's all right. It made it challenging, so thank you.
Can we press you to come to town meeting and sit with us at presentation?
I think Dan or somebody, I'm planning on it. I... Yes. Let's just...
We need you.
Yeah, yeah.
There'll be some questions we may not do. It's a special with the Fledge of Agents.
Yeah. Well, maybe some history on how it was built, you know, or what the issues were that resulted in. But yes, I, I would, I plan to, I plan to be here June 1. Where you have a special meeting, at least for introductions to get you started. I know it's beyond, but I said to the individual coming, I will be there, you know, at least at the beginning because she's been working with me. You know, that just seemed like the right thing to do, you know. We have a plan in place that I think will work. And a matter of fact, I'll share this. I mean, I, this is what I'm leaving the town employees with. And basically, it's, it's, it's Jack's, or the managers, let's not personalize it, but the manager's active work file. In this particular case, I have every one of these subjects in a special label file so that if somebody is interested in, you know, oh, an engineering report or something, you can look at that, go to a corresponding file and everything will be there according to that. So I could say to you, everything here is what I've been involved in and worked on. There's tons and tons of other projects or other subjects that are still alive probably, but I didn't get personally involved in them. So these are the ones that I personally got. And I kept them all separate so that the new town manager can get into the active stuff real quickly, okay? And most, everything on here Simone is real familiar with. If she isn't, somebody is in the department. If it's a public works thing, Roger's on it. If it's a CAD thing, CAD's on it. So it's just not my own individual file, but it's a file representing the activities of the town manager. And that's probably what it really should be in.
Have you had, has Keith been in at all? Have you had discussions with Keith or?
I spent a day with him shortly, well, the night he was here, I think. And what I tried to do was, was not bury him. And we, actually, I came up with this idea. I'm not going to be there on day one when he comes in. I'm not going to try to do a two-day, this is what you need to know and walk out. Because it might get sort of that. I found that out myself. I think I'm more valuable to him if I'm there as a resource when he needs me. And if he uses this as a guide and he gets into a subject matter, all he's going to do is pick up the phone. I mean, I live down the street, you know, I'm only left with the top actual contender job, so, and he wants me to stop in, sit and talk, you know, depth, we will. But I think that's a more valuable resource than, than, you know, the cram, you know, cram for the exam, you know, method. Because you, you just, all of a sudden, your mind's just, you fall, you know, you don't know the difference between this dip and that dip and, you know, this road and that road. And so I told him, and honestly, I'll stop by, you know, I'll stop by tomorrow and say, you'll take, you know, if you need anything to do, you know, by. But I think on demand or on calls better than, you know, walking away and saying, Dan, do you have everything?
Did he spend time, Simone, in the office with the people, talk with the girls at all?
He did. He went around and introduced himself to everyone and went downstairs and then.
Sent a couple of emails this week and they bounced back, so maybe. I wonder if he took a break for a couple of weeks between jobs or something. Because I emailed them at the office on the webpage and that typically happens is that, you know, when you leave, they catch you up, so I'm not sure. But I'll be there, whatever. And same goes, I'm not going to meddle, I'm not going to, you know, I have no intentions of being or I'm not needed, but if you, as a board, need something, some depth, just give me a call and I'll show up tonight and give you a quick synopsis of it, you know.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thanks for the kind words. This, I think we have to take a moment of silence here because we've had some tragedies this week. I know Velma's computer died or, you know, that.
Now, it's just a little sick. It's not terminal.
It's not, it's not terminal. Okay, well, we can, that's good because we're going to audit flowers, so.
I'm always up for flowers.
But we did have a couple of losses this week in the family. And one of them was the only thunderstorm and lightning storm we had, I think, this spring was about a couple of weeks ago on a Sunday night. And it was really minor, if I remember right, but it wasn't minor enough because the air conditioner at the fire department got hit and got fried. The electrician said it either got hit by a huge surge from that, you know, that storm or got hit fairly directly. We knew in the office something had gone wrong because that morning, all our computers were wacky and not operating right. We got them all back, you know, but we knew there had been something that had come through. The air conditioner is an expensive bird. It's an outside air conditioner. It's the one that does the living quarters, office complex, et cetera. And we've had the electrician on it. The repairs were, and I don't have it with me, but in the thousands, as in 2,000, 3,000?
3,326.
Might have given you a coffee. Okay.
3,26, 39.
I filed an insurance claim with $1,000 deductible, but it's worth it, honestly, in this case. The claim's being processed. The question will be when we get the claim, do we try to rebuild it with, you know, with the parts or are we better off looking at a new one? I'm not ready to determine that, or we're not ready to determine that. But it definitely has been knocked out. In addition to knocking out, dropped dead problems, we've lost the wrecked bus. That no longer is inspectable. People who inspect buses are very, very cautious individuals. And for all the reasons that you would hope that they would be, putting 70, 60 lives on a vehicle, you know, on a Catholic honor is uninspecting. The cross members pretty much are no longer passing inspection. Cross members, I'm sure you know this, the cross members are all of the, all of the horizontal members are on the chassis of the bus that the body sits on, okay? And I can, I don't know a lot about a lot of subjects, but buses happens to be a subject that I do know pretty well. And I can tell you that in 80% of every bus that's off the road, it's off the road for cross members. And they're very, very expensive to replace because of labor, because they're all riveted and part of the frame and you have to pick up, you know, all the rivets. And, you know, it's not like changing a drum or changing, you know, any part. You have to dismantle the whole unit, lift the body up, put new cross members, rivet them, like, it's not, generally, it's never worth it because by the time the cross members grow, your bus has already aged pretty heavily. And it's, it's difficult. A lot of companies now are doing special winter climate programs to it. I don't, I mean, this remains to be seen if that, is it like a heavy-duty winter undercoat on the cross members? There's arguments about undercoats, as much you get a hold of it, you know, sometimes everything sets and then it rides out, so. What they'd like to do, Dr. Roger and Jen this afternoon, you might want, I don't know what the protocol is, may have to be a gender item, I'm not sure. There's a couple thousand dollars left in the maintenance account in the wrecked department's current budget. Roger would like to, well, Engen, but Roger suggested that we transfer that out into the reserve account. That couple, because we can't fix it anymore and it's not going to be spent. So if we don't need it, fine, expect it because it's not on the road. So that we transfer that out, giving us a little more money to work with in the reserve account to go out and see, you know, what we can purchase with, with the money. In other words, you beef up the reserve account a little bit by the maintenance money. Again, I, I just had this discussion right before I got here. I said I may have to wait for a couple of weeks, you know. But I do know, I do know what they're proposing, and that is to give them a little more cash upfront for, to buy another unit.
Is it going to make it through the summer program as far as?
No, my understanding is it's, I think, when the inspection run out, it's done.
So it's already run out?
And if it isn't run out, it's about to.
Jen's being panicked over there with some.
She can use buses from our.
R2, I think.
So.
They're short on buses too.
Do they do that normally, or can that be done?
They have in the past. They don't like doing that.
Transfer money out of?
Oh, the transfer money. I've never, I haven't done that.
I thought, I thought that we can only do 5%. I thought there was only a percentage that we could, that we could do.
Roger claims, because that's immediately what I asked, right? What's the history of your government? Roger says you have, but he goes back a long time, so. We can look into it.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks will be all right. But I think it, in my opinion, you probably ought to have it on the next time you meet and there ought to be a plan for, please.
I want to check with the auditors too.
Yeah, I would say the auditor would be the one that's going to check because, you know, granted, we can't use that account, but if we get a new bus, then that account is still viable option for the, for a new bus, right? They're still going to have maintenance fund if we get.
It would. My guess is you won't, you won't get a new bus until July, but.
And then those funds from this fiscal year, which is all over into the general fund, if you have authorization to transfer them to reserve.
Yep.
And I don't know if that takes the town meeting board or you can just do it as a whole group.
We'll work on it. I, I put a couple of calls out.
What do we have in the reserve right now? Not much.
Yeah, you do.
You do?
You're 15,000. With issues?
With issues, okay.
Right? I think. I don't have.
14.
I believe.
The email I got was 14,000.
All right, so I've set the seed and everybody knows, I'll talk to them tomorrow, put a couple of Plan A, Plan B. They need to shop, I mean, and, and I could be a contact for you in the future because I still, I still have a couple other employment connections, but who knows? So, you know, where that goes, but I have asked, by the way.
Yes, I'm on the finance committee of the school district. And the district is buying five new buses, lease purchase over three years. And this year, so they're retiring five. And while those all have under plus 1,000 miles on them, I think some, if not all, are still serviceable. And so maybe there's a means of picking up one of those at a very low cost. Also, recently, they had one of the buses repaired where one or more of the cross members was brought it out. There's, I think there's a local company that specializes.
There is.
In doing that.
There is. And one or two is maybe cost-effective to do, but if you.
No, if it's more.
You rack fill them, you know.
But maybe at least for an interim solution, buy one of the district buses and give them a quick paint job, you may get a couple, three years out.
I am aware of those that are coming in from 21. And I've inquired, some coming in from Norwood, New Hampshire as well. So if you ask for, quote, the pick of the litter, sometimes, you know, you can, you can get a good, a good one. And you just got to keep, keep your nose down and keep looking, keep talking to people. And in some cases, a wrecked department, how do I want to say this? Sometimes providing a bus to a municipal wrecked department can be, falls under non-retail and can be sometimes provided off or, you know, partially written off as a donation. That's not unheard of either, so.
We only had this bus for, what, three years?
Phil got it, didn't you, Phil?
Yeah.
Three or four years?
Three years.
Three years because that was, that was on the board when we got it, so.
So it costs us $400 a year to own that bus.
It was a bargain, yeah. You know, if you, this is not a real negative. This is, this is a natural, you know, process of, of all buses. I mean, that's, that's pretty common.
Well, if we're able to pick up the bus for what we have in the reserve right now and you want to paint it, you've got the maintenance money perhaps to do that. So that, but I get used to that.
Well, the other thing that happens is the tires are good, insalvageable. I can tell you that. The other thing right now is, is a bus is worth a paramount scrap metal. And motors, huge motors, you know, are worth money. In some cases, buses that can't run are as valuable for parts as they are, you know, as, as a whole unit and transmissions, et cetera. So, you know, we certainly would, would, we'd get something if we piece it out a little more capable of doing that.
Yeah. If you find a buyer of the engine and transmission in that bus would be worth.
$3,000.
Five times, six times what you paid for the bus.
Yeah. And, and scrap metal?
Yeah.
A lot of metal on those. So anyway, okay, I'm taking up a lot of time, but it's something that, you're right. Not a lot of dilly-dally and can, you know, can happen here if, if we're going to use that bus in magnitude that we commonly do. The other thing is, and you don't have to do anything either, this was on a to-do list and for me, it wasn't a hot item. So I'm just trying to wrap up a little loose ends. But when we talked about giving Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday packages and get that clarification of what maybe you wanted your original amendment to say, and we talked about that, you folks said maybe I could draft something that would clarify that. We did. Wendy worked on it today and Simone worked on it today and I worked on it. And it's not smooth, but it's certainly better. And maybe it will help clear up exactly it is what you want to say. And it's pretty basic. And that is the benefit packages of those extra holidays is available to per diem, it's only two holidays only. And not available to, you know, at any other time. And I think, I mean, it's, it's not terribly complicated. It's hard when you're wordsmith, you know, like. Is that something, Simone, that should be going on next month or next time as a follow amendment?
Just to review it and then.
All right. That's what I anticipated, but at least you got something that's certainly not working on blank paper. In addition to that, both Simone and I knew what the history was and what you were trying to say, so it seemed like a good thing to try to get done. That's it? Sorry?
You had a discussion with the sheriff's office?
Oh, I did. Actually, that's the most exciting part of my career. And it was a discussion on, on a subject matter that I didn't anticipate. And I did get a call and I was asked if I could be visited and the sheriff himself did come, but the chief deputy came and the new patrol commander from Virginia, nice man, came and we had a big discussion regarding our current deputy who is going to be transferred temporarily to Mesibisik High School as probably the new resource officer for the rest of the year. Troy is resource officer certified, then lost quickly, unexpectedly, the resource officer. And they asked if they could transfer Troy in at the end of the school year, which is really short time, but I can. four or five weeks. And they will provide replacement. And I said, absolutely. I mean, if we can help. I I know those predicaments and not every deputy is 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 the type of individual that can walk into a high school, you know, for a full-time job. So we do have somebody who certainly want to utilize that. So we had that conversation. I said, I would be more than happy to help. But what what we needed to do was how we had full coverage. That, you know, that had to be anticipated. It was never a question that we would have full coverage. Who we have for coverage wasn't quite readily available. We made a couple of suggestions. But as you know, we're getting contracts and transfers, et cetera. They, you know, they have to process how that's gonna be. Well, I couldn't pass up the opportunity. That's the part I'm waiting for. So I kind of said, Mom, you know, I'm disappointed. I thought you were coming over here for another reason. And I said, we need to talk. And I sort of unleashed a little bit and they certainly knew what I was talking about. The issue, as you know, is with the county commissioners. And you know, I forget there is a whole bureaucratic component of county government beyond the department heads, you know what I mean? And and so there there are a group of financial concerns regarding the contracts in general. In some cases, the inequity of contracts because they have they've, you know, Town A may have a contract five years ago, Town B, ten years ago, Town C, one year ago. It may not be a standard, you know. I understand. I mean, when you get into a newer environment, newer structure, you know, you don't always standardize things at the beginning. So there are a bunch of, let's call them management challenges that they're looking at. I said, that's fine and good. I respect that. But, you know, I said, you know, if you're looking for someone, I'm looking for work, you know, and I tried that routine. But I said, here's the bottom line. We budgeted and we have spent X number of dollars. We've had no input. Okay, and consequently, that's the way it's gonna be. And, you know, I can tell you right now, there's not gonna be any negotiations because the negotiations should have already taken place. And they haven't. Understand if you can, but please understand the opposition. And I said, we're gonna have some explaining to do as it is because the public isn't interested and not accustomed to, you know, unexpected increases and and increases without explanation. And so far, we're working on it. Isn't a real good explanation. I understand, but, you know, just just keep that in mind. And and I said, we we did the best we can, but we went solo. I said, I'm sorry, you know, you gotta hear this, but unfortunately, the two people that have come into the office and, you know, that's who I'm gonna talk to because they're here. We all agreed that, you know, we would have to deal with what we had for finances and et cetera, and that they didn't want to lose us in the contract and they have high expectations for more and more. They grow. But I got it off my chest, but that makes made me feel better anyway, you know.
I think we certainly need to, you know, follow that up with Keith, but we certainly need to get engaged with them both and have some sort of contract and everything, you know, lined out, you know.
For the price of it.
Absolutely.
I I don't know if it started because we had started with a COGS program and it was a whole different, you know, that that program took care of like the first three or four years or whatever. But, yeah, I I was very surprised when I saw it didn't have figures.
These two men, gentlemen, with offices were very understanding, polite, appropriate. Don't get me wrong. I might have been a little harsh, but I've been saving it up for a while, so. And and I said, look, I mean, frustrating, you know, I'm I'm used to doing business a little tighter. So have we had the conversation and and?
So they know that's all.
If you ever need to have me come back to remind you, let me know.
If I if I may, I too had a conversation with the sheriff's office last Wednesday on the County Budget Committee. And the sheriff's department presented the budget that had been approved by the commissioners. And he, the sheriff came in and basically presented a request to the budget committee for an additional four hundred thousand dollars over and above what the county approved. And he he had a very good rationale for why their short staff growth in the county and unfortunately, growth in problems in the county. And this was briefly discussed. There was some indication that they'd gone out to the towns and basically trying to submit a request to the six towns that are paying for deputies to renegotiate that agreement and standardize it. But the four hundred thousand is is the need, not the money, but the need was pretty well received by many of the people on the budget committee. However, from the standpoint of representing the towns, the larger towns are saying, well, you know, we have to pay for that and we don't get anything for it. That's been an age-old problem and isn't going away. It is, that situation isn't resolved yet. There are more, the district attorneys will be presenting tomorrow night. Then the budget committee will sit down and and come up with what they think is appropriate and they may or may not go with what the commissioners have recommended. The county manager, on the other hand, was pretty adamant that while the commissioners had received a comprehensive presentation we had, they were looking at it from a budget standpoint and they felt that that's all they could afford to lay out on the towns. So there's a real, a real issue going on right now. I don't know yet how it's gonna be resolved, but it could could result in perhaps one or maybe even two more deputies being added to the staff. What I'd like to know is, how do you as a selectman feel about the job that the sheriff's department is doing, the coverage we we get as a town? I'd like your feedback on whether you're satisfied.
Well, I can tell you one thing. Looking at the town report, I can't remember exactly how many, but boy, there was an awful lot of traffic stops this year.
And there's one guy on for forty-eight hours, forty hours. And he got a hundred and seventy-eight hours in a week.
I think you've done a good job of slowing the traffic down, at least on the limit over here. I'm not sure about the other roads, but.
I I think my my problem currently, though, is when we had Matt, we tended to, he tended to try to be here more in the daytime and, you know, he weekends occasionally, like especially, you know, in the summertime to for traffic or whatever and stuff. They have the new officer, they have the officer that we have now. They they're not flexible with his schedule. It used to be that Matt was ours and they kind of, they, Matt kind of set his hours more because of what the town needed. Now they've turned around and they've set the hours that he does a six-week block of of like, you know, like, what is it, Tuesday through Sunday for six weeks and then another six weeks of, you know, different days. So it's just whatever they want and not necessarily what's best for the town. And I think that's kind of a, you know.
It's not personalized to your community.
Right.
It's a standard schedule of on and off. You can block it out six months ahead, you know. But it's it's, if you are having a major event in your town, if it didn't fall under that block, you wouldn't have it. Unless you paid extra money. You know, so it's.
Maybe that's something we ought to negotiate, this new contract.
Exactly. I mean, we pay for them, so they ought to be at the hours that we want and.
Because he used to, sometimes he'd do evenings a little bit in the summertime or things like that, but he would kind of like find out what was going on in town and and was always available if we had an event or something. But Troy is like, you know, this is your schedule and this is, you know, set in stone for like, you know, these, what, like three months ahead of time that you knew exactly.
Yeah, I I mean, I I don't want to get into the session because I don't want to let everybody else out in the world know what his schedule is, but I can, you know, I know I know what blocks he's worked in. He's gonna work for the next five weeks or three.
I travel around around quite a bit, day and night, doing what we do. And I gotta say that I see the sheriff's department vehicles. I don't always know, particularly at night. I don't always know if it's Troy or someone else, but I see sheriff department vehicles at at all different hours of the day and night, whenever I'm out there. And I don't say every single time, but, you know, I've seen him out there at two in the morning. I've seen him on Sunday at night. They're always out there somewhere. I don't know what the schedule is, but I know I see him around a lot.
I'm more worried about you being out at two in the morning. That's scary.
Tell all maker to keep the ice at home and I'll stay home.
Okay.
We have, at one time, the sheriff's department raised their rates. We wanted to add somebody else. There were a group of people at town meeting that decided that that was a ridiculous price to be paying and they voted them out. They voted them out completely. The motion was made to give the sheriff's department zero dollars. Somebody seconded it and it was a majority vote and voted it down. They voted them out, so we didn't have the sheriff's department anymore.
I mean, you have two camps. I mean, I hear, I read somebody say we should have two and then, yeah, people say we don't, we don't need one, so. I don't, I don't know what the barometer is from the town, but.
Next question, I mean, I did, we got spoiled with Matty. I mean, he was.
Yeah.
He was really good. He was so responsive. Anybody pick up the phone, if it was on or off, didn't matter, he'd show up and see which problem it was. I understand. I can't do that because of.
You're a black guy promoter.
That's great. He was, he was good. And and Troy's, I like Troy too, but.
Troy has been excellent. As far as whatever you ask for, maybe we'll do it. It's it's a given, invited.
I think we have to free him up a little bit from 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 his mandated schedule. Give him some flexibility. You know, I know his his boss says this is the block you're gonna work. Well, that's the block he has to work. We need to negotiate. He can set his own time. He's in this, he's in our town. He knows more than anyone when and where he needs to be. And and the office in Alfred can't say you're gonna work Wednesday, Friday and Monday when he knows he needs to be here on Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, we do have weekend festivities in some of our businesses. And we could actually go without coverage on those weekends for six weeks. You know, if we're on a six-week, you know, Tuesday through Thursday schedule, I'm not making sense, but I get a point of that. The other thing is, oh, I know this is a department standard likely negotiated in a in a contract. And it's, don't be surprised if it's gonna be hard to move them from point A to point B because they may not be able to.
Right, but I think we and and I bet the other other communities would have the same concern, want to have their deputy more personalized to their community at all costs.
And there may be an opportunity for six towns to have a workshop. Okay, because.
The sheriff's department covers twelve towns. And and of of the twelve, that's about half of York County, five, five hundred of the thousand square miles. So and they're staffed such that they they have no more than three people on duty or shift. Occasionally, there'll be a sergeant out there too. But they cover a lot of territory. And the sheriff's markets seem more concerned about response time. You know, they're, and that may be a bigger problem farther out in the county than it is here. I don't know. But response time at one o'clock in the morning, when you know your guy is not gonna be here.
There's also supposed to be sharing with state police, aren't there?
Well, the state police cover five, five of the towns part of, part of the time. And I I didn't sense a total degree of satisfaction with that or hatred either. It isn't perfect. It's it's they've got a scarce, a scarce resource and a big job to do, and he was pleading for more money. They've also got, would you believe, cars that are vehicles that are older than our school buses. And 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 they have a lot of equipment needs as well. And that was the other thing that they were putting, staffing, vehicles and protective equipment. None of them have cameras. There are no cameras, I don't think, in the vehicles either.
Because they're in ours, because that's our vehicle, right?
Yeah.
You know, and our vehicle is ours. Is there a camera in the vehicle?
I don't know. It's true, I don't.
The message, this message really run pretty true with the budget committee members. There were three of the five county council, county commissioners there. And and they did hear the message. They appreciated, I guess, a much better discussion than was held when they were given the pitch. So I don't know where it's gonna go, but I just wanted to let you know and I certainly appreciate any feedback you have, particularly with regard to response times.
One of the things that.
We did have the Jeff Heavy here one night talking about not getting to Dutch Elm for two or three hours. And that apparently happens fairly often, you know, depending on circumstances. If something serious is going on, they've got to call in all three people, same spot. And there's nothing out there.
Two or three things regarding response time. And one of my other hats that I wore in my life was this. Yep, I was a deputy, okay, in Van Cart County. And so it's a subject that I'm familiar with and response time is is reminds me a lot of mutual aid in the fire department. If you need service in a, in a, in a major emergency and that call goes out, you will have wardens, you will have marine ordens, you will have, you know, anybody that is in in the general area responding because my officer needs help. It it is, it's a, it's an alert medical, I mean, not mutual aid, I mean. There was an accident three or four weeks ago on eleven that I happened to hear and said, oh, oh, and went to it because I assumed it was. "Uh-oh," and went to it, because I assumed it was trouble, and it was. There was no PI, no personal injury, but it was a traffic nightmare, and I called it, and it was 40 minutes, okay? Because I, and I knew Troy was off, okay? Now, going back to what Jack said, you know, that officer was the other side of, you know, active.
Just margin of field, so.
Yeah, exactly. Now, I never worry about when you really need somebody, okay? But, but county government and county services is always gonna be a challenge for you in any community. If you, remember I said earlier about Simone's a saint for living with me and, or working with me, and one of the, I used to, I've been on some pretty good rants, raids about, you know, about this subject, but I always grab myself by the ears and say, "Wait a minute, 40 hours is what? You have agreed to pay for coverage." You know, there's no way of making it 48, 54, you know, 60. It's 40 hours, and you have to realize that's the characteristic of what you have, you know, of your relationship. And then I go and say, "Boy, 40 hours is sure better than no hours." And then I'm fine. I get over my little spell and, you know, I, I move on, but you gotta talk to yourself, you know?
But we need those 40 hours to be flexible. We really need them to be flexible. It doesn't take long for somebody, if somebody's watching, the sheriff, it doesn't take long for that person to figure out what their schedule is. I mean, and I like it when I'm coming up Route 1 on a Saturday afternoon, and right there by the intersection of the campground road, I see the sheriff's car sitting over on the other side, just keeping an eye on traffic, you know?
Well, their job is more complicated, there's much more than traffic, too. I mean, we do do a lot of traffic, which is good, but, you know, I get a chance to chat once in a while over a coffee with, and, boy, it's a jungle, you know, it's, no. We, we don't know how for the.
No, we don't.
We don't.
Absolutely.
The drug trafficking right now.
We don't know how.
Absolutely, after that. I had a judge read an obituary on the bench a couple of days ago, and he glanced at the hearing, somebody died from a heroin overdose, and he said, "This is out of control." That's good.
Of course. Cheap drugs now.
And the activities to go, which, you know, I mean, anyway, we beat this up, okay?
All right, one, in fact, I make one, one final comment.
Yep.
The sheriff said, too, that he's in a position where he's got to, he's got to send an individual into a situation, particularly domestic situations, where the police department would, that is better staff, would always send it to. And he doesn't have any choice in the matter. The, forgot to hear the coin, I was there, man.
But that's a good one. I mean, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
A police department will never send one person on a domestic dispute, and yet.
Oh, the other point was, I, I sensed that while there was reciprocal arrangements with the town police departments, that it wasn't always functioning as easily or as, as easily or as well as it might be. And I sense not as good as fire departments.
No, you're right. Absolutely right.
And I don't, I don't know why that is. My personal sense is, if you looked at, you know, the base population of the county, 200,000, and you took all the sworn officers in all 29 towns, you probably have enough coverage, but half the county is spread very thin with staffing, and the towns that can afford it have much better staffing, and that's the way the world works.
Highly so, the union's liability, you know?
I'm sure the union contract.
A lot of supervisors told their people to stay out of the towns because of liability issues.
And, and follow the union contracts.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have any old business, so let's move on to new business. I request the town hall calls at 12:00 PM on Tuesday, June 30th, for fiscal year end.
I'll make a motion that we have the town hall close at 12:00 o'clock on Tuesday, June 30th, for fiscal year end.
I'll second that.
And any other discussion on that? All votes in favor? Motion carries.
Now, those funds in the, in the school bus account, their repair account, as of June 30th, those will end up lapsing, we don't have a bill or anything for them, those will end up lapsing into the general.
Fine, but I'll tell. That's why I think you, we ought to think about doing something positive and to address this.
Our next item is Point Lyman CEO Patty McKenna as deputy court enforcement officer for Arundel, as stated in the memorandum of understanding.
Well, we have a wonderful memorandum of understanding that's been put together with the help of many of you people, and it's, looks great. Only trouble is Patty is leaving. And she no longer, is, is she no longer gonna be working in that town. So I would suggest that you just set it aside. It's, it's on my list in a folder. It can be resurrected. I really like the idea of shared services, you know, within communities to help each other out. I think the whole concept was a great one. At this point now, you gotta fight for the playoff. And so we're all set to go on this, and I opened up the Weekend Paper, the job, and I said, "I think that's a contract I'm just signing." So let's pull that one, how's that?
Yep. Okay, good. Approval sign the registrize hours for the June 9 election.
Yep, so move that we do this.
I'll give a second.
Second.
And those hours are?
It's basically to do it and keep the registrize hours during business hours. Otherwise, by statute, I have to stay open two hours in the evening, and nobody, you know, usually comes to register. You can register on election day as well, so that's why I made that one.
Motion. Just want to clarify, in case somebody's asking on that. Okay, all votes in favor? Okay, municipal officer certification of office text of proposed ordinances.
Basically, you have the appendixes A through M, as far as, you know, either map changes or lay news ordinance changes. This is the certification form that I keep with the official text of the ordinances, so I don't know if I just make a motion to sign, appendixes A through N, actually not M, N.
A through N.
N. And those are, they're all available here, and I have them available on the town, at the town office, they're available on the website as well.
Oh, and we need a motion to sign the municipal officer certification of official text of a proposed ordinances, A through N.
Appendix.
Uh, well, or the ordinances, yeah. It says, appendix, yes, appendix, oh, A through N, yes.
I need a second.
You made that motion, don't you?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
Any other discussion on that? All votes in favor?
I did mention to somebody on the RSU's floorboard that they please either print or type their names, so that we could read them.
Is that well received?
Why would that person, because you could read her name?
Gerwood Parkinson's going to be more reading, getting certified.
Better warn the audience to not try to combine.
Yeah. I don't know why.
He doesn't like it.
We used to combine them at the end, like the housekeeping articles, but I don't know why.
I don't know why either, but.
He doesn't like it.
We'll move that, we'll remove his moderator if he doesn't do it.
Right? There's another way to skin that guy.
I know I've tried a couple of times. I'm done. Last year, I think Dave Wayne tried.
We did verify that article that, you know, the percent interest when you have an abatement, and people always say, "Oh, so if I overpay my taxes, you'll pay me back?"
I haven't even looked at the top to see what.
It's pretty exciting to watch.
It is, I mean, they've kept it pretty organized, too, Jack, that's, you know? But it goes around the third time, though, you could, you might mention that they've already done it.
Might be time for me to.
Yeah, right.
Call it a night.
Good night, Jack.
Good night, Jack. Thank you.
That was N, right? I looked, made sure it was N.
Yep. Okay, the last item, funding new business and review and sign payroll when accounts payable once.
It's lying around somewhere.
Yeah, right there, so move.
Okay, I have a motion to, wait, you're a second.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Second.
No.
Bill, any other discussion? All votes in favor? Motion carries. Before we go into executive session, does anybody have any other information, other items that they want to discuss or bring up? Okay, with that said, I will create a motion to go into executive session for one MRSA 4056A to discuss a personnel matter.